Board of Trustees, Sarah, would you start us off by taking the role, please?
I'll be taking the role as the staff to executive committee. Broughton.
Here.
Sisnerus.
Here.
Delen. Delen? Here a moment ago. Duran? Petula?
Here.
So like.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we'll begin with a call for public comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the executive committee, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. I think everyone's online, there's no phone callers. I'm not seeing anyone with a hand up. So, all right, so we will move on to our agenda. We have nothing on our closed session agenda. I have no chair's report for this committee. There are no consent items, and so moving to the business agenda, item 3A is a proposed revision to state bar rule 3.662 regarding the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission.
And I'm sorry, before Dawn gets started with that, Mr. Duran is in the attendee side, if he could be promoted.
And Doug, I'm back here.
I saw you when I promoted you and have marked your presence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I begin or, okay, great. Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Dawn Wing and I'm the Program Manager in the Office of Access and Inclusion, and I oversee the grant, the legal aid grant program. So again, this agenda item deals with the state bar rule 3.62, which currently states that the Board of Trustees may appoint members of the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission for up to two, three-year terms. Staff proposes changing this rule so that we can align with the global recommendations that you passed a few years ago, which sets the terms of appointments for all subentities to see with the possibility of a reappointment to serve as an officer. So at the last Board Executive Committee meeting this past March, this committee authorized a 30-day public comment period. So I'll be reporting back on the public comments that we received. The public comment period ran from April 1st through April 30th, and we received three public comments. Two public comments were in support of the proposal, and one public comment was in opposition, and I'll go through each of them right now. There was one commenter who is a current member of the Legal Services Trust from Commission who supported the proposal but didn't submit any additional comments. The second commenter came from the Legal Aid Association of California, LAC. LAC, if you're not familiar, is a statewide organization, a statewide membership organization comprised of 100, about over 100 legal aid nonprofit organizations, and many of them are IOTA grantees. LAC did express a support for the proposal as it stands, but does request the board to consider more flexibility for terms of appointments for client-eligible members. And just as a reminder, the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission is comprised of 24 members, 21 are voting. The board appoints a number of them, the judicial council appoints a number of them. There are four public members, and of the four public members, two must be client-eligible as defined by statute. So LAC would like to implore the board to consider more flexible term limits for client-eligible members, stating that they thought it would be detrimental to lose dedicated and eligible client members due to term limits. The third public comment came from the California Access to Justice Commission, and the Access Commission works towards achieving equal access to justice for all Californians, and they've been doing this work for about 20 years now. The Access Commission did submit a letter, and that's included in your materials, and they expressed concern that the proposed rule would unnecessarily reduce term length and thus the experience of serving commissioners. They further note that the experience and well-informed commissioners provide integrity to the funding and policy recommendations that are made by the commission. Many of them that are then elevated to the Board of Trustees for approval. So staff has carefully reviewed all the public comments and considered them, and we still reaffirm our initial recommendation of changing rule 3.62 to align with the global recommendations, and to summarize for the following reasons. We think that the new term limits would not only enable better coordination amongst the state bar in general. We think that it would encourage greater diversity and inclusion in the commission, not just gender, race, ethnicity, but also geographic diversity. Right now, currently, the commissioners, many of them are based in San Francisco region or the Los Angeles region. There are, there's one current member that's in Eureka, a little bit more urban, another's that's in Sacramento, but we don't have a lot of geographic diversity. There's nobody on the commission that's in central California. There used to be some commissioners that were in the inland part and San Bernardino region, so we think that having term limits will increase the demography of commissioners and especially geographic diversity. We also want to note that after we posted the memo with our recommendation, we did realize that the board book does have an additional provision for the Board of Trustees that you may you may appoint commissioners or for subentity volunteers for an additional term. So you're not, if this rule passes, you're not restricted by just this rule. If you found for some other reason that you would like to appoint a legal services trust fund commissioner for an additional term, you would have that authority too. We just think that it would be prudent to have the one-year term limit so that we can encourage diversity and to align it with other subentities. So for that reason, staff does ask that the Board Executive Committee recommends to the Board of Trustees to amend the state bar rule as set forth in attachment A. And I am happy to take any questions.
Right. Discussion, questions? Otherwise, would someone like to make a motion?
Move the item, Mr. Chair.
This is Jose, I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Ruben, second by Jose. I think we have the wrong resolution on the screen, though. It's three, we want 3A, there we go. All right. The motion is to adopt the resolution shown on your screen. Unless there's further discussion, then Doug, please take the role.
Broughton? Broughton? Mark Broughton, are you on mute?
There, somebody took my screen, yes.
Sisnerus?
Hi.
Delen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Petula?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Next is item 3B, approval, proposed approval of additions to our legislative priorities. Doug, looks like you're presenting on this.
That's correct. This item requests executive committee approval for the addition of support, in particular, three letters of support for bills that have either been introduced or have been amended and that we believe directly address interests of the state bar and values that are embodied within the state bar strategic plan. AB 1487 would establish a homelessness prevention fund to be administered by the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission. The amount is as yet to be determined, but the funds would be distributed to tenants for legal services, education and outreach in landlord tenant disputes. Assembly Joint Resolution 12 urges the US Congress to revise the US Code to allow for benefits that are distributed under the GI Bill to be used for California accredited and unaccredited law schools. Currently, the US Code requires that law schools must be either ABA accredited or accredited by a special accreditor that would allow the the person attending the law school to sit for any bar exam in any state. Those conditions do not apply to California unaccredited law schools and also do not apply to a number of accredited law schools. Finally, SB 770 would appropriate $10 million to support the, to expand the pathways to law school program, which is a partnership between high schools and community colleges. As I mentioned at the outset, all of these bills fall squarely within the state bar's strategic goal for to improve access to justice and diversity in the legal profession. And so we would, upon approval by the executive committee, be looking to send letters of support of these bills.
All right, thank you, Doug. Any discussion or questions from members of the board committee? Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Jose?
Thank you.
Duran, I'll second.
All right, motion by Jose, second by Ruben. Seeing no further hands raised, Doug, please take the role.
Broughton?
Yes.
Sisnerus?
Hi.
Delen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Petula?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thanks, everyone. This will complete a very concise meeting of the executive committee, and so we will adjourn, and next up is the Regulation and Discipline Committee.
All right, good morning, everyone. Just trying to do a quick check here on members. Lisa, do we have everybody on that needs to be on?
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We need Jeff Del Serro in. When you get to the first closed session, business item.
That's going to be trailed to the end of the agenda.
Okay.
I don't see the long trustee.
Has she reached out to anybody as far as scheduling this morning?
She is not available for the meeting today.
Okay. All right, well, I'm go, oh, sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
And then just Adala Cruz, trustee Adala Cruz.
Any word from him?
I do believe he emailed the other day and indicated that he would be late.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And then trustee Sewell, I see him. Okay.
All right, well, let's call the meeting to order then. Lisa, please take the role.
Good morning, everyone. Broughton?
Here.
Chen?
Here.
Here.
Dela Cruz? Duran?
Here.
Goodog? Petula?
Here.
Selig?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Sewell?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
And Stalling, okay, we have a quorum. Stalling?
All right, yes, I'm here. All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to another fun and exciting day here at the Regulation and Discipline Committee. We, as you see on our agenda, closed session item is first up. However, we're going to trail that to the end of the agenda for those who are who are tuning in today to to participate in this meeting. So that will be trailed. I think it will probably be heard around 9:40, for those of you who would like to wait till then. So Jeff, if you're hearing this, probably about 9:40 is when we'll get to you. So at this time, I would like to make a call for public comment. If there's any individuals who wish to address RAD, please indicate by raising your hand in Zoom, or if on a phone, notify staff. Lisa, are you going to be monitoring that, or is that going to be Doug?
Doug usually helps me with that.
Just ask that member, that public commenters keep their comments to around three minutes so we can perform the work of this committee, and so you can be heard. All right. Whichever staff member is monitoring, are there any raised hands in the attendee side?
There are not.
All right, we will move on then to chair's report. I'm going to give my chair report during the Board of Trustees meeting. We'll now go to consent. Are there any members who wish to pull any items off of consent? Okay, seeing none, I just need a second on this in order to go to a vote.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All right, second by Mr. Duran. Lisa, could you please take the role?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Sisnerus?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Goodog? Petula?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Hi.
Sewell?
Yes.
Tony?
Hi.
Consent agenda has passed.
All right, thank you. Going on to item 3A is a formal advisory ethics opinion, and this is a request for approval for publication. And presenter, we have Mr. Tough. So Mr. Tough, welcome, and please walk us through this agenda item.
Thank you, and good morning, everybody. This ethics opinion addresses what ethical obligations arise when a lawyer in a law firm is suffering from an impairment that is causing the impaired lawyer to either violate the rules of professional conduct or the State Bar Act while representing a client. The opinion went out for public comment twice, and during the second round of public comment, the committee received five public comments, including comments from both the Los Angeles County Bar Association and the California Lawyers Association Ethics Committees, who stated they agree with the analysis and the conclusions of the opinion, that they support its publication, and they believe the opinion is of vital importance to practicing lawyers and the protection of the public. The opinion, however, did receive a critical comment from the Los Angeles County Public Defender's Office. They disagreed with the opinion, and in particular, take issue with a statement in the opinion that says, and I'll quote, "Each lawyer in a law firm has an independent ethical obligation to protect the interests of the firm's clients." And that's the end of the quote. And the LAPD says that this proposition is flawed and not applicable to situations where only a particular division or branch of a law firm is involved in the representation. The committee closely considered this concern, but they disagreed with the limitation that's provided by the commenter and observed that the statement in the opinion is supported by both the rules of professional conduct and case law. COPRAC also observed that the commenter is focusing on a single sentence, but when read in context, the committee believes the opinion is clear that the proposition is predicated by a lawyer's knowledge of the impaired lawyer's conduct. So for example, this opinion focuses on ethical obligations of a supervising attorney and a subordinate attorney who know of an impaired lawyer's conduct. And part of the opinion analyzes Rule of Professional Conduct 5.2, which is a new rule as of 2018 in the state of California, and that rule addresses the responsibilities of a subordinate lawyer, which provides that a subordinate lawyer must comply with the rules of professional conduct and the State Bar Act, notwithstanding the fact that they, that a subordinate lawyer acts at the direction of a supervisory or managerial lawyer in a law firm, and thus has an independent ethical obligation to protect the interests of the client. As a result, a subordinate lawyer in a law firm who knows of an impaired lawyer's misconduct is not excused from fulfilling their own ethical professional responsibilities simply because they are a lower level or subordinate attorney. All that being said, in order to address, or at least to respond to the concern raised by the Los Angeles County Public Defender's Office, COPRAC did add additional language to the opinion in order to reiterate that the duties discussed in the opinion are limited to attorneys with knowledge of the impairment or the misconduct. And after having considered all the comments received, the committee is requesting approval by RAD to publish this opinion on the state bar's website.
And Andrew, could you just, for the benefit of some of the newer members, then also for non-practitioners, talk a little bit about what a ethics opinion is and how it's how it's used by the state bar and then disseminated to lawyers in order to protect the public?
Sure, so I'm going to bifurcate that question because there's a procedural question, and there's the practical question of how they're used. So procedurally, the committee develops an ethics opinion. They either receive a request to develop an ethics opinion from lawyers or members of the public, questions that they think are difficult for other practitioners of the public to understand or analyze, and the committee considers those requests. Neither agrees to develop an opinion on those topics or respectfully declines, or the committee develops the topics themselves, and they meet every five or six weeks, and they develop these opinions as a very iterative process. And pursuant to their rules, they go out for public comment. And typically, the first round of public comment is always 90 days, and they welcome public comment. In particular, local county bar associations have ethics committees which have very seasoned practitioners who can see issues and other observations that are just very helpful, because when you are focused on your task, you know, you're not seeing the forest from the trees. And so having this outside perspective is always helpful, and the committee welcomes that. And that there are substantive revisions to an ethics opinion. After having received public comment, it will go out for an additional public comment period. So that occurred with this, with this opinion. And then following consideration of all the public comments pursuant to the committee's rules as directed by the board, it goes to RAD, just so RAD can ensure that the committee has gone through their procedures. And once approved by RAD, it is published on the state bar's website. And ethics opinions are non-binding, they're advisory only, but to brag a little bit, they are quite helpful. And oftentimes, they're cited by appellate courts and even the California Supreme Court. And we take great pride in that when that occurs, doesn't occur all the time, but it has occurred a handful of times. And, and so they're just very helpful to practitioners, the public, as well as judicial officers. So I think I've answered your question, Brandon, but if not, I'm happy to address anything I missed.
No, it definitely answers mine. Are there any members around that have any questions for Mr. Tough? Yes, Mr. Duran?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tough, does the subordinate lawyer have an independent duty to go out and investigate facts? Or is it just facts that they learn in the normal course of their representing the client?
It's the latter. So no one has, a lot of the rules of professional conduct are predicated on knowledge. You have to know of misconduct or knowingly take, take action. So to answer your question, it's, it's knowledge, but that statement leads a paragraph, which then narrows down to focus on the fact that a subordinate lawyer can't say, I'm just a subordinate, it's not my problem that I know, you know, other lawyers in the firm might be engaging in misconduct, or that my supervisor is failing to communicate the settlement offer to the client. The subordinate lawyer in that example, according to the analysis of the committee, has an independent obligation to raise that concern to their supervisor. If it can't be resolved, and you're in a larger firm environment, maybe discuss it with another supervising lawyer in that example. If you're just in a small firm environment, it's only one subordinate lawyer with a senior attorney. It's just the two of them working. The subordinate lawyer might have to make a difficult decision to actually communicate directly with the client that there's a problem. And that's the analysis that this opinion undertakes.
Thank you.
Right, any further questions? Any discussion? May I have a motion?
To move to a brief task recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, so it was a first by Ruben, second by Mr. Dela Cruz. The resolution is up on the screen now, resolved at the Regulation and Discipline Committee, following publication for public comment, consideration of the comments received, and upon recommendation of State Bar Standing Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, approves the publication of formal ethics advisory opinion 2021-206. Attached here too is attachment A. Is there any further discussion? All right, Lisa, could you please take the role?
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen? Sisnerus? Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Goodog? Petula?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Hi.
Sewell?
Yes.
Tony?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Go to item 3B, which is Arbitration Advisory 2021-01, and this is a request for approval for publication. So we again hear from Mr. Tough, so please take us there.
Okay, so switching gears a little bit. Now we're discussing an arbitration advisory. And following the 2017 Task Force on the Governance and Public Interest and the Board of Trustees Appendix I Review, the Board of Trustees retired the Committee on Mandatory Fee Arbitration and transferred the function of drafting arbitration advisories to COPRAC. And the purpose of an arbitration advisory is different than that of an ethics opinion in that an arbitration advisory serves to provide guidance to volunteer arbitrators regarding disputes or issues that may arise in connection with mandatory fee arbitrations. Excuse me. The Board's resolution that transferred the responsibility for drafting arbitration advisories to COPRAC instructed COPRAC to develop and disseminate arbitration advisories in the same manner as ethics opinions. So, Brandon, thank you for your question before. The arbitration advisory goes through the same process as I just described previously in terms of public comment and responding to public comment. And this arbitration advisory summarizes existing law and is intended to provide guidance to arbitrators on disputes concerning costs and expenses. And three public comments were received concerning the arbitration advisory, and the most critical comment was submitted by Carol Langford. And Ms. Langford does not believe that the arbitration advisory should permit an attorney to charge for an overhead or administrative expense, even when those charges are conditioned upon disclosure and client consent. And COPRAC considered this comment and the concern and believes that the arbitration advisory accurately reflects current legal authorities on the topic, which find that without disclosure to the client in advance of the engagement, a lawyer's overhead expenses are included in the lawyer's fees and may not be charged to the client as an additional cost. The committee also noted that the arbitration advisory states that such costs remain subject to scrutiny for necessity, reasonableness, and fairness. However, in order to address some of Ms. Langford's concern, COPRAC revised the arbitration advisory to add an additional reference, stating that, stating that although an attorney may recover expenses for items traditionally viewed as overhead when they are clearly disclosed in the fee agreement and agreed to by the client, such expenses must be reasonable under the circumstances. And after considering all of the comments received on the arbitration advisory, this item is requesting approval to publish the arbitration advisory on the state bar's website.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Tough? Any discussion on the resolution? All right, may I have a motion?
I'll, I'll move the, I'll move the item.
This is Chen.
All right, first by Trustee Sol, second by Trustee Chen. I know there is the, the dog in the background. I don't think any further. I didn't hear any other requests for discussion on this, but any other?
I believe that was my dog. I apologize.
No worries. We, we'll just add it to the Zoom repertoire.
He's a tough guy. Yeah, sorry.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, Lisa, please take the role.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros? Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Goodog? Protula?
Yes.
Selleck?
Yes.
Shelby?
Hi.
Sol?
Yes.
Tony?
Hi.
All right. Excellent work. Thank you, Andrew and your team for putting these agenda items together.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move now to item 3C. So if we could promote the presenters on this. Should we go again, Deep Car? And maybe Suzanne Grant? All right. All right. Good morning, Ms. Carr and Ms. Grant. We are presenting on item 3C.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll take that. So in this item, staff proposes to amend California Rules of Court Rule 9.23. So currently, Rule 9.23 provides the State Bar a process for requesting increase of money judgment for, I'm sorry, outstanding discipline costs and CSF reimbursements that are part of disciplinary order. So the State Bar can enforce, collect basically the outstanding debt in these areas. It also provides a process for requesting compromises of these judgments. The recent developments, as I'll discuss in a few minutes, expanded the State Bar's authority to enforce additional types of amounts owed to the State Bar as money judgments. So the staff is recommending amendments Rule 9.23 to provide the process to allow the State Bar to request those increases of judgment. The amendments to California Business and Professions Code Section 6140.5 that became effective January 2021 authorizes the State Bar to enforce as money judgment all CSF final determinations, so not just those that are pursuant to a disciplinary order. And it also removes the State Bar's authority to compromise as judgments for CSF reimbursements because Superior Court has original jurisdiction over California Client Security Fund reimbursement and any related issues. Additionally, in March 2020, the California Supreme Court approved a State Bar Court Rule 5.137, which imposes guidelines for the imposition of monetary sanctions pursuant to Business and Professions Code Section 6086.3. This rule 5.137 provides monetary sanctions can also be enforced as money judgments and collected by any means provided by law. So based on these two developments that have taken place, the staff is proposing that we amend California Rule of Court 9.23 by one adding that the State Bar has authority to enforce as money judgment all CSF final determinations as well as monetary sanctions. Also adding a new provision in the rule that allows the State Bar and the debtor the right to file a motion to amend, vacate, or stay enforcement of judgments within a specified timeframe. Also adding a new provision along the State Bar to bring similar motions at any time for the benefit of the debtor in terms of correcting an error or halting any collections efforts. We also propose clarifying that the State Bar's authority to compromise money judgments incurred for disciplinary costs and wire share sanctions because, as I mentioned earlier, Superior Court has jurisdiction over Client Security Fund reimbursements. And lastly, clarifying that the California Supreme Court's authority to alter the court ordered amounts such as disciplinary cost monetary sanctions and court order restitution, it's limited to that. The two areas where we're requesting that the State Bar be able to file a motion to amend or vacate or stay enforcement of judgment or the debtor be able to do that. The reason for that is currently there is no similar process like that that a State Bar or the debtor can use to bring similar types of motions. We end up relying on process that exists for small claims court judgment or for Superior Court judgment. Since Rule 9.23 provides process for requesting entries of judgment, it made sense to include a similar process for if any changes need to happen to those judgments. Basically, those are the types of amendments we're seeking. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address those at this time.
I just want to add one, one thing to that is that this rule is being requested, proposed rule is being requested for public comment for 45 days. And after that, once it's approved, we do need to submit it to the California Supreme Court for their approval.
All right, any questions from members of RAD? Right, I know that during the bench bar coalition meetings, defense has had this as one of their items of discussion. So look forward to hearing from ADDC during the public comment period. So I would just add that to, to the discussion here. Is there any other discussion?
Move the item, Mr. Chair.
Jose, I'll second.
First by Mr. Duran, second by Mr. Cisneros. Any further discussion? All right, Lisa, please take the role.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen? Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Goodog? Protula?
Yes.
Selleck?
Yes.
Shelby?
Hi.
Sol?
Yes.
And Tony?
Hi.
Motion carries?
All right. Thank you to the Office of General Counsel and our two assistants, who Assistant General Counsels who presented on that. Thank you. Moving on to item 3D is the Discipline System Statistical Report, and that's brought to you by our very own Lisa Chavez.
Good morning, everyone. Excited to just give a brief presentation on the Discipline System Statistical Report. I'll be very brief, but I feel like I need to engage in a little level setting for our new trustees. So you may be asking yourself, how does this report differ from the metrics report that is attached to an item on the Board of Trustees' agenda? And it differs into three major ways. First is that whereas the metrics report looks at the most recent time period for the purpose and examines data for the purpose of accountability, this report takes those metrics and instead gives you the last 13 months worth of data. Another thing this report does is provide additional data to give context to those metrics. And then finally, this report contains analyses that we've done on post-disposition outcomes and the complaining witness survey. And so let me just give you really quickly an example. In the metrics report, there's a chart that looks at the annual caseload clearance rate for OCTC, and we analyze the last several months. The DSSR is going to give you 13 months worth of data, so you can see how this has changed or not over the last year. Here's an example of where the DSSR gives additional context to metrics. So for example, on the left, this is a chart in the metrics report that looks at successful completion of probation. And these are just rates expressed in terms of percentages. But in the DSSR, you can actually see the number of probation cases that were closed. In other words, the number of cases that, on which the chart on the left is based. And so anyway, that's, I just wanted to give a little context of how these two reports speak to each other and how you can make use of them. And I'll just close by saying that the State Bar recently acquired Power BI. And we are moving towards putting all of these charts and data online. And so this would be an example, say like this chart on the left, you'd be able to hover over it. You see the value, the percent, that's what really you're measuring, but you'll hover over it and then you would see the number of cases. And so we're really excited about this development and I look forward to sharing that with you in the coming months. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the DSSR? Thank you.
All right. No action needs to be taken on this item. So unless there are any questions for Ms. Chavez, we will move to now the closed section, item of the agenda. And this is closed pursuant to Government Code Section 11126, Sub C, Sub 2. And for members of the public who are listening in, this should last approximately 20 minutes, should reconvene back into the open board session at about 10 o'clock. And then it's my understanding that we're going to go into closed session at that point. So Sean, are there any other instructions you want to give at this time? Or Ruben?
Nope.
Nope, thank you.
Okay, you should have received an email from me around 10 minutes ago with the link to that closed session.
All right. See everyone on the other side. All right, I think we have a majority of the RAD members now back into open session. We have adjourned the closed session of the RAD meeting and no action was taken, nothing to report out. So I will adjourn now the RAD meeting for May of 2021. And we'll go over to the Board of Trustees' agenda and I'll hand it over to Chair Sean Selleck.
All right, so I understand we're scheduled to start at 1:00. So you have a leisurely lunch, late breakfast and lunch. Donna's saying, am I incorrect?
So the closed session, we're going to start with the, we're going to adjourn recess open, go into closed session. And the, the open session will return at 1:00.
Uh huh.
And so, right, so typically before we adjourn, we go into closed, we would ask if there's public comment on the closed session items.
Very good. All right, so we're going to stay on this link. So we're ready to roll. So we will.
I'm going to, Chair, Chair Selleck, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute break.
Oh, that's fine. Let's have a 10-minute break. Let's come back. How about 12? We'll live it up. So we'll come back at 11:00 a.m., 12-minute break. See you then.
And I'm prepared to take role, Chair.
Are we ready? Are we recording?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so this will begin the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Broughton?
Here.
Chen? Cisneros?
Here.
Dela Cruz?
Here.
Dellen?
Here.
Duran?
Present.
Trustee Gunong has previously informed us that she's not able to attend this meeting. So her absence will be noted for the duration. Protula?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Sol?
Present.
Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Present.
Okay, Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, so our plan for today is we are going to begin with closed session. The open session will begin at, is scheduled to begin at 1:00. We, this open session is to receive public comment on our closed session items, if any. If you, if there's anyone listening who has public comment on our open session items, there'll be an opportunity for that when we reconvene in open at 1:00. So with that, let's begin with a call for any public comment on the closed session items. I see we have some attendees online. If you're interested in addressing the Board of Trustees, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Seeing no raised hands, we will go into closed session and we're going into closed section, pardon me, closed session pursuant to Government Code Sections 1126 to 111, sorry, misspoke, Sections 11126 through 11126.2. So trustees, please exit this meeting and use the link that's been sent to you to join the closed session.
I do suggest that we
I, I do suggest that we take the role just because we're starting a fresh session.
Absolutely, yes.
So let me know when you'd like me to do that.
Yeah, someone, everyone is not, if you're not speaking, go ahead and mute there, someone has some background voice coming through. Okay, Sarah, please start recording and let's go ahead.
Okay.
We are recording.
We are recording. Broughton.
Here.
Chen. Sisneros.
Here.
Dela Cruz.
Here.
Dylan.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Um, trustee Gonong is absent for the meeting. Protula.
Here.
Shelby.
Present.
Sewell.
Here.
Stallings.
Here.
Tony.
Present.
Okay, you've got a quorum and you have everyone back.
Thank you. All right, well, we're continuing with, with our board meeting. Just to set the table for people following along this morning, we had a very brief open session with really no substance other than asked for public comment, and then we went into closed session. We're now going to get to the substance of our open session items. And before we do that, I'd like to make a call for public comment for anyone who would like to comment on the agenda items before the board today. So if you would like to address the board, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. And I'm not seeing any hands. All right, so.
And Chair, excuse me, I would just like to note for the record that trustee Chen is present.
Thank you, welcome, hi Lynn. All right, let's, let's proceed to item 10, the minutes, looks like we have three sets.
That's correct.
And unless there's discussion, could I hear a motion, please?
So say I'll make the motion.
Sonia here, I second.
Thank you. Motion by Jose, second by Sonia. There's any discussion, don't see any, let's go ahead and take the role.
Excuse me, Chair, I want to thank the staff for including a public comment in the minutes, thank you.
You guys, check it out. They make my circuit.
Oh, Ruben, your mic's open. Okay. Um, so we have a motion on the table to approve the three sets of minutes identified in the agenda. And now we'll take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yeah.
Sisneros.
Bye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Protula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Aye.
Sewell.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Okay, the minutes are adopted.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Um, the next item is the Chair's report. I just have a very brief report for you this time. I want to let you know that the Ad Hoc Commission on the Discipline System had its first meeting on April 30th. It was a six hour meeting, very substantive, what a good discussion. We concluded by preparing a preliminary list of topics for the commission to study. The next meeting will be on May 24th. And the commission will meet in through two subcommittees. So we've set up a subcommittee on fairness and a subcommittee on effectiveness. And so we're going to start, continue to, to flesh out our work plan and the issues we're going to discuss and and keep busy. So I want to let you know that process is underway. The other thing is we have put before you a revised list, this is item 30-1, revised list of committee liaison and special assignments for board members. With one change, Mark Tony has asked not to be on the audit committee. So, so I would invite a motion to approve this item with that change.
Um, I seek some clarification here. Chair, this is a secretary. I, I, I thought the item was to add Mark Tony to the audit, audit committee. And that's what this item intends to do. Is, is there a difference?
Maybe there's nothing that needs to be done, well, there's, well, Mark can speak for himself, yeah, go ahead.
I, I requested of, of the Chair. I had changed my mind and I left the Chair know ahead of time. I had request, I want, I had requested it. And then I had, had second thoughts in terms of my time. And, and so I contacted the Chair prior to this meeting. You, you know, making that request that I, so, so that's, that's how it happened, it's really my fault.
No, 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 I'm sorry, my clarification then is old, obsolete, and we could just consider this item withdrawn.
Okay. It shall be. Uh, all right, let me, let me get the agenda back in front of me, bear with me for a moment. Uh, next item is a report from the executive direct interim executive director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to actually waive presentation of an oral report at this meeting. I would just direct you to the written report that was included with today's agenda, which touches on the importance of continuous improvement in both bold and ordinary ways. The report also tees up for the board staff's intention to formulate and launch a comprehensive compliance review process, which will be addressed at a future board meeting. And so with that, I turn the microphone back over to the Chair.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. So is there, does any board member wish to pull an item from consent for discussion? Uh, seeing no hands, uh, I would welcome a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Uh, who is that?
Dela Cruz.
Oh, okay, so motion by Ruben, second by Juan. Please take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Bye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Protula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Aye.
Sewell.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
Uh, the consent items are moved.
Thank you. Um, next we'll do reports of board committees, starting with item 110, Board Executive Committee. So we, the executive committee this morning approved three additions to our legislative agenda. And Donna, you probably are more adept at explaining me, so if you would go ahead and just summarize those briefly.
Actually, I'm going to let Dag summarize those for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, in monitoring legislative activity, staff identified three bills that we believe merit support, a letter of support from the State Bar. Those are AB 1487. AB 1487 establishes a homelessness prevention fund, which would be administered by the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission. And the funds would be distributed to tenants to provide legal services and conduct education and outreach programs in landlord tenant disputes. There's not, not a dollar figure associated with this yet, it's subject to an appropriation by the legislature. But it would have an immediate and obvious impact upon the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission if passed and would improve our ability to provide access to justice to needy Californians. Another bill that we're looking for support on a letter of support is a joint resolution, Assembly Joint Resolution 12, which urges the United States Congress to revise the US code to allow GI bill benefits to be applied to California law schools that are not accredited by the American Bar Association. As currently written, the GI bill is restrictive in allowing benefits to be used for law schools. It's restrictive in a way that prevents beneficiaries from using those funds to pay for unaccredited and even for some accredited California law schools. And then the final bill that we're looking for letter of support on is SB 770. SB 770 looks to provide a $10 million appropriation to expand pathways to law. The pathway to law school program, which is a partnership between high schools and community colleges, which seeks to diversify the profession at the earliest stages in the pipeline to a legal career by assisting students to get into a legal career early in their academic career.
Okay, very good. Uh, any discussion, comments, questions about the executive committee's recommendation to you to add these three priorities to our legislative agenda? Ruben.
Ruben, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, just with respect to the last, the last initiative that Dag discussed, it, it calls to mind the, the days when we used to meet in person. And I remember a particular board meeting where Judge Harbin Forte gave a very exhaustive presentation to the board about issues just like that, essentially the pipeline into law school, starting at high school and sometimes even earlier. So I'm very happy to see this effort and with that comment, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Arnie.
Um, I just want to let the board know that I, I don't know if I have to abstain from the entire vote or whether or not this could be bifurcated in some fashion. AB 1487 is a bill that the, the nonprofit that I'm an executive director of is very involved in and very engaged in. We've taken a support position on that bill in the role that I play there and a part of a big coalition and those sorts of things like that. And so I don't know if, if that somehow causes issues for me with, with this particular, with, 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 with my board vote here.
So without knowing, you know, more detail, because we didn't talk about this ahead of time, I, my response, my reaction is that it does. And that you shouldn't vote on this, but I, then I think we'd have to buy for Kate.
Yes. So let's do that. Ruben, would you be willing to?
Chair, would you like me to screen share the resolution so that we can see what's, okay?
Please, perfect.
And while the secretary is bringing that up, Mr. Chair, of course, I'm happy to bifurcate as necessary and so amend my motion.
Okay, thank you.
This is Brandon, all a second, the bifurcated motion.
Thank you. All right, so the present motion will be to add AJR 12 and SB 770 to our list of legislative priorities.
Deleting 1487, right?
Correct.
And the comma.
Okay, all right.
Second, and the second comma.
All right, any further discussion, questions? Sarah, go ahead and do, take the role, please.
Um, Broughton.
Sorry, yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan. Dylan.
Are you on mute? Oh, maybe she's frozen. Oh, it looks like it.
Oh, no, she's moving.
Sorry.
Dylan.
I have no comms, I'm sorry.
Um, do you want to cast a vote on item number 110?
Yes, thank you.
112, 12. Uh, Duran.
Aye.
Protula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Aye.
Sewell.
Aye.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
Okay, the motion, the bifurcated motion carries.
Thank you. All right, now would someone like to make a motion about AB 1487?
Brandon, so moved.
Shelby, second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Chair?
Motion by Brandon, second by Melanie.
Okay, I will just. I will fill in the rest.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
AB 1487.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, any discussion? I can't see everyone, so if you wait, Arnie?
Do, do I just say abstain or pass or what's, what's, what's the appropriate?
Abstain, abstain.
Okay.
Okay, if anyone else wants to speak, use the raise hand or, or speak orally, because I can't see everyone's video right now. Okay, don't hear anyone, so Sonia, go ahead and take, pardon me, Sarah, please take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sisneros. I'm sorry, didn't hear.
Aye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Aye.
Protula.
Yes.
Shelby. Oh, um, Melanie, you have your mic muted.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Sewell.
Abstain.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
The second motion on this item carries.
Thank you. Next up is item 120, report from the Regulation and Discipline Committee, Brandon.
All right, thank you, everyone. So I just want to take a couple of minutes to highlight some of the work of Office of Chief Trial Counsel, staff, Oria, Rad, and then members of our body. So as you all know, staff worked exceptionally hard to submit the annual discipline report to the legislator. And of note, to myself, was the 5% decrease in backlog and a continuation of looking at the cases and prioritizing those in backlog that pose the highest public protection risk. The implementation of recommendations in addressing racial disparities in discipline was covered in the report and really highlights the steps that the bar is taking to address these important issues. Our quality control in OCTC remained high. We continue to reach out to vulnerable populations with targeted services, meeting their unique needs. The report highlighted how our staff is working remotely to protect the public. And then the client security fund payout of over $11 million to 265 individuals to try and right the wrongs of, of lawyers who committed, who violated the rules of professional conduct, I think, is, is definitely of note. As Sean said, the Ad Hoc Commission on the Discipline System met for the first time. And we look forward to continuing to work to improve our discipline process in the areas of fairness and effectiveness. And then lastly, our search for a permanent CTC has been in full force in effect. And we have a finalist, we have finalist interviews scheduled on the Board of Trustees' closed session agenda later on. And we look forward to presenting a permanent CTC for Senate confirmation. So thank you, Sean.
Very good, thank you, Brandon. The next item is number 140, report from the Finance Committee, Jose.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. The Finance Committee is moving all issues forward in partnership with State Bar staff and our still new CFO, Wallace Tang. Um, I do want to note for the trustees that one of the issues that the Finance Committee continues to work on is the area of real estate. As everyone, I'm sure, well understands, the pandemic has created a, a number of changes and tumult in the real estate marketplace. And so our analysis that we were doing will need to be prolonged and. And so our analysis that we were doing will need to be prolonged and understand new necessities for both office usage and real estate opportunities. We'll be coming back with more on that topic in the future. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Next is item 180, report from the Audit Committee. Sonia?
Thank you, Chair. At the April 28 meeting of the Audit Committee, the committee received a report of the results of the independent IT application security assessment from Chief Admin Officer Steve Mazer and IT Director Rick Rankin. Reviewing the results of the IT's security assessment is part of the Audit Committee's work plan. In 2018, the bar did an independent network security assessment, which reviewed the bar's network infrastructure, such as servers, wireless networks, and routers. Another network security assessment will be conducted later this year. The assessment that was completed in April reviewed application security, looking at the bar's business applications themselves with a focus on high-impact, high-use applications, including external, which is public-facing applications, internal, the state bar employee-facing applications, state bar hosted applications, and cloud-based applications, high-impact, high-use applications, which includes the independent assessment conducted by Aurora IT, a firm specializing in IT security. It included review of application code, review of database configurations, review of IT security policies, penetration testing on applications, databases, and servers. Aurora identified application security issues and assigned priority to them using derubric likelihood of occurring and impact to the organization. 10% of identified issues were classified as critical or high priority, 90% were medium to low priority. The bar's IT team plans to have all critical and high-priority issues remediated within 90 days, at which time the Aurora team will come back to review the remediation results. Medium and low-priority issues are targeted for completion by the end of this year. The IT team is also incorporating the assessment findings into security policies and is its application development procedures. And finally, going forward, the bar plans to continue the practice of moving away from custom-built in-house applications and instead using highly secured software as service platforms such as Oracle and Salesforce. Thank you, Chair.
Hey, thank you, Sonia. Okay, let's move on to our business agenda, beginning with item 701, which is the approval of certain contracts. And I believe Steve Mazer is going to present this item, may need to be pulled in from attendees. There we go. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This item requests approval of contract amendments with Examsoft to add the exam ID and exam monitor functions for the remote administration of the July 2021 bar exam and the October 2021 legal specialization exam. The details are included in the agenda item memo, and Steph would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, questions, discussion? Mark, Tony?
Thank you. I remain very unhappy with the Examsoft contract with the lack of accountability that Examsoft has been held up to, particularly looking at the number of complaints from the survey from the February bar exam. And I just believe that, or it may have been the October bar exam, but the point is that there are still a lot of complaints that are out there with lack of customer service, people having to wait on hold for long periods of time to get help, and technical glitches. And I don't believe that this Board of Trustees should be supporting a vendor who has these issues and, you know, the problems have not been addressed. So that's my comment.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, Chair, as the liaison to admissions, if you don't mind, I'd like to just address it for a moment. I think Trustee Tony's concerns are very valid ones that we have looked at and continue to look at and think there's quite a bit of improvement. I think there's an understanding that the, this was the first time in October, it was the October exam that had the survey. It was the first time we've given an online exam, and there were quite a few issues, but much smaller than we expected. And it's something that the staff is going to continue to work with Examsoft on. This is an incredibly important contract for the bar so that we can actually administer the exam going forward in the next two exams. That being said, Trustee Tony is absolutely right, that there's quite a bit of improvement that needs to happen, especially in the customer service. And as the liaison, I can expect to continue to work on that matter. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, do you hear a motion?
Jose, I'll move the motion.
Thank you.
Josh, I'll second.
Thank you, motion by Jose, second by Josh. Any further discussion? All right, Sarah, let's take the roll, please.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Sis Narrows?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dellen? I think you're on mute again. Trustee Dellen?
She must have stepped away.
Okay.
Yeah, you should move forward, I think she's going to abstain on that.
Okay. Duran?
Yes.
Kertula?
Yes.
Shelby?
Abstain.
Sewell?
Hi.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
No.
Okay. The motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Next item is 702, Strategic Plan Status Report from our interim executive director. Oh, Donna, you're on mute.
Got it, thank you very much. I wanted to go a whole meeting without having you say that to me. I'm going to share my screen right now. So, good afternoon. I wanted to take this opportunity for a brief status update on the implementation of the 2017 to 2022 strategic plan, give you a sense of where we are on the many objectives that are set forth in the plan to move the needle, move the needle forward in meeting the plan's goals and the state bar's mission. There we go. So, just wanted to start with a quick reminder of where we were as of September 2020, when we had the last formal update on the status of the strategic plan. You'll see that the objectives for two of the plan's five goals were identified as completed at that time, with a number of objectives still in progress for the remaining three goals. The rest of this report, the rest of this presentation will highlight the movement that has been made on those remaining objectives since that last report in September of 2020. So, starting with goal two, which is briefly stated, to ensure a timely, fair, and appropriately resourced admissions, discipline, and regulatory system, starting highlighting the additional objectives that are completed since our last report. Since the last update, we've deployed the MCLE provider upload system, which will allow the bar to improve its monitoring of compliance with minimum continuing legal education requirements, ultimately giving us the capability to audit 100% of attorneys for compliance with their triennial minimum continuing legal education requirements. Additionally, since the last meeting, since the last update, we can check off as completed the reporting of firm size and practice type. The trustees will recall that at the last board meeting in March, you approved a mockup of the changes to the attorney profile. Since then, those changes that you approved have been implemented. If you go to the website and take a look at the profile, those changes have been implemented. The changes, though not part of the display, but the backend of the changes now require the reporting of firm size and practice type, consistent with this strategic plan objective. This summer, we'll be promoting those changes to license attorneys to begin to get these fields populated. The final additional objective to note, as having been completed on this goal, is having to do with evaluating the impact of the transition from a three-day to a two-day bar exam. Specifically, the objective was to look at the costs and the pass rate. There were reports presented to CBE in 2019 on the impact of the pass rate, December 2019 on the impact of the pass rate, and December 2020 on the impact on the costs. I would note that this analysis was based on exams that were conducted in July of 2017, February 2018, July 2018, and February 2019. The board specifically directed that the analysis be conducted following four exams that were conducted in the two-day format. The key findings at a very high level were that there was no impact on the pass rate on the costs. There was a reduction in cost as a result of the transition to the two-day. There were significantly more cost savings realized, looking at the February exams than comparing the July exams. But overall, the cumulative savings for all four exams over this period was $1.3 million. Those cost savings are attributable to a variety of factors, many of which we don't have control over. And they did not take into account any of the changes that have happened with the transition to the remote exam, starting in October of 2020. And we still have three objectives, you'll see in the middle column here, three objectives that I expect to be completed in 2021. I would note that the objective that includes the workload study is actually a fairly lengthy objective that includes several items to report and track the health and efficacy of the discipline system and to adopt measures to improve the fairness and efficacy of the discipline system. And beyond the language that's included in the objective, obviously additional efforts to assess and approve the efficacy and fairness will be driven by the work of the ad hoc commission. But as to the specific items noted in the objective, the one that is not yet completed is the workload study, or more accurately, the interpretation of the data gathered through the workload study to identify staffing and resource needs. The final two objectives will continue to the next, will continue past the end of the calendar year. Moving on to goal three, goal three, set forth in the strategic plan is to improve the fiscal and operational management of the state bar, emphasizing integrity, transparency, accountability, and excellence. You'll see that for this category, there was one goal that is still set to be completed in 2021, and one that may commence in 2021 but will not be completed before the end of this strategic plan. I do, however, want to draw your attention to my third column on this slide. As the more tenured board members may recall, I've certainly taken more than one opportunity in the past to comment on my personal thoughts about the structure of the bar's strategic plan, which seems at least to me to be in part strategic plan, part operational plan, and maybe a bit of tactical plan thrown in for good measure. I certainly look forward to participating with the board in shaping the vision for the next five years, when the next planning session occurs in January. I also look forward to addressing some of these structural issues. So, going back to the third column here, you'll see I've identified these as objectives that I believe are somewhat different than those with a clear start and endpoint. I designated these as objectives that are designed to be ongoing. The two specific objectives referenced here, one is to improve productivity through performance accountability, training, and professional development. And the other is improve staff morale and career satisfaction through recognition of performance, career path development, transparent and collaborative communication, and recognition of encouragement, of innovation, efficiencies, and money savings ideas. I frankly think we would be doing a disservice to staff and to the organization as a whole if we were to say, you know, check, these items are complete. A smart and healthy organization must continue to keep these as goals throughout time. The bar has absolutely, without question, taken a number of steps to implement these goals, these objectives. But if we're doing our jobs correctly, from my perspective, they should never be checked off the list or forgotten. The final goal that had objectives that were still in progress as of the last update was goal number four, which sets out as the goal to support access to legal services for low and moderate-income Californians and promote policies and programs to eliminate bias and promote an inclusive environment in the legal system, and for the public it serves, and to strive to achieve a statewide attorney population that reflects the demographics of the state's population. Starting with the additional objective that I think we can mark off as completed, the California Bar Exam Strategies and Stories Program was first launched with the July 2018 bar exam. It's an intervention to improve bar exam performance. Productive mindset interventions like this one mitigate the harms that are associated with concerns about potential belonging and stress, and they help spur motivation and improve performance. This program was developed to help test takers find productive ways to interpret the challenges, obstacles, and negative psychological experiences associated with preparing for the bar exam. Its goal was to improve bar applicants' test-taking experiences and exam performance. Findings that the, from the researchers who are conducting this study, the findings from the first two administrations of it yield very positive results, with the most significant improvements in pass rates seen for applicants of color and first-gen law school applicants. And although we have not yet fully institutionalized this bar exam strategies and stories program going forward, and we have been able to continue to work with the researchers and expand the program to the October 2020 bar exam, the February 2021 bar exam, and the upcoming July 2021 bar exam. The presentation that's immediately following mine, and we'll talk more about this bar exam strategies and stories program, as well as the other DEI objectives that are noted on this slide, which are currently in progress, so I won't, I won't go through those at this point. I would point the board again to the third column on this slide. As I was cataloging our progress for this meeting, I also identified these objectives as ones that I do not believe have an end date. There are certainly specific things that we are doing to study approaches to increase access, to support education, to address issues that people do not identify as legal issues, and to engage in efforts to attract and retain lawyers in legal aid. There are efforts that we have begun and that will be completed before the end of the year. But again, I think it will be years, maybe long after, unfortunately, long after any of us are still in this business, before we can stop paying attention to the needs to take steps forward in each of these three areas. The final objective that I wasn't frankly sure how to categorize, goal, objective D of goal four was really about the work of the Access Through Innovation and Legal Services Working Group. As many of the board members know, that working group completed its work in 2020, when the board accepted its report and acted on recommendations from that working group. However, the adoption of the recommendations from that working group led to the formation of the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group, which is really And which has really just started its work. And so they will not be presenting a, and they are not scheduled to present a report to the board until late in 2022. And so we could consider that objective either completed if we think about it as related to the first working group or, or delayed if we think about it as related to the ongoing work that our Closing the Justice Gap Working Group is, is engaged in. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Questions, comments? This is, I believe, just informational, so you don't need a resolution. Okay. All right. Oh, sorry.
No, no, no problem. Just real quick, Donna, how often do you do this?
I think we do it as Sarah may be in a better position to remind me. I think we do it in May and September. And then the July, July board meeting, I'm sorry, the January board meeting, of course, is is our annual planning session. So there there's a little bit of this woven into that, but not, not a full update.
Okay. I may want to just talk a little bit more about this in our, when we do our one-on-one weekly, just to understand the case and opportunities for input.
Absolutely.
Okay, Ruben.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to very quickly thank Donna and the staff that works with her and for her. One, for putting together the presentation that I think reminds me that there's just a lot going on at this organization. You know, beyond what I, I deal with on a regular basis. And it's multifaceted and it's a lot of work in the face of some daunting challenges that we've been through over the past 15 or 16 months. So my personal thanks, Donna, to you and your staff for the progress that you made on some pretty important goals. There's still some work to be done, obviously, but that's okay. That's, you know, that's sort of the, the way of the world. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure to pass that along to staff.
Well said, Ruben. Thank you. Further discussion, questions? Okay, all right. Not hearing any further discussion, then I will move on to item. And thanks again, Donna, for that. Move on to item 703, Discussion of the Biennial Diversity Report. And Elizabeth Palm looks like is joining us. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will share my screen now. Okay, so I want to thank the Mr. Chair and the board for the opportunity to share with the board the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan for 2021 and 2022 that was reported to the legislature in March of this year. As you can see, Business and Professions Code Section 6001.3 requires the state bar to develop and implement a plan to demonstrate our ongoing commitment to enhance access fairness and diversity in the profession and eliminate bias in the practice of law. We are required to prepare and submit this report every two years, beginning in March 2019. And we are allowed to include an assessment of needed revenue for this work. So in 2019, we did not include that information, but for 2021, we did include an assessment. So the report to the legislature was really centered around the state bar mission as well as our strategic plan. And as you all know, diversity and inclusion was included in the state bar mission in 2017. And then the statutory mission was amended effective 2019 to include the same. Also in 2019, the board amended the strategic plan to include for the first time specific diversity and inclusion goals. And I want to, you know, underscore that the board was very thoughtful in determining how to prioritize diversity and inclusion and focused on areas where the state bar could be the most impactful as a regulatory agency. With input from stakeholders, including from the subentity, the Council on Access and Fairness, the board focused efforts in pipeline to the profession, beginning with law schools and bar exam, retention and advancement in the profession, and supporting judicial diversity. Additionally, recognizing the state bar's ability to collect and analyze data, the board also prioritized collecting and analyzing licensee demographic data and publishing an annual report card on the states, on the state of the diversity of our profession. So these five areas are the state bar areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI focus. And so this was how it was presented in the report to the legislature. And so I want to use this as a roadmap for this presentation. So first, I will go through these five areas and the accomplishments of the last two years. And then I will go over the areas again with our plans for the 2021 and 2022.
So I would just note that, that I've asked Elizabeth to, to keep the the discussion of what we've done over the past two years at, at a high level. Although it was a sort of a, a, a internal debate that I had, we want to take every opportunity to highlight the good work that was done in this area. I do feel like we have talked about quite a lot of it in various various meet, several meetings, various venues with trustees and with the public. And so we wanted to take an opportunity to remind you of that, but not to not to go in depth on what we've done in the past, but to focus more heavily on what we're, what we're, we're planning to do in the future.
Thank you, Donna. So with statewide leadership, as you all know, we have been conducting an attorney census that goes along with the licensing fee payment process during that time period. And with that, we collect, we request attorneys to report their demographic data, and we also ask questions related to retention advancement to get a better understanding of issues related to satisfaction, belonging, and inclusion in the profession. In using this, the 2019 data, we published our report card on the diversity of California's legal profession last summer. The report card includes calls to action for employers and attorneys to suggest some actionable steps that both of those groups can take to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in the profession. We've also used diversity summits as a way to bring together leaders in the profession to share out the data, get feedback, and discuss particular issues that are relevant. In 2019, we were able to hold an in-person summit and included many leaders from affinity bar associations as well. From that summit, we, we got a lot of feedback that each sector in the profession has its own challenges and solutions. And so for 2020, we opted to have sector-specific summits. So last year, we held a private sector summit in September and a nonprofit sector summit in December. We've also had the opportunity to share out the census data as well as the report card widely at various local and affinity bar association meetings as well as at conferences. The second area is creating a culture of diversity. And really, this begins with raising awareness about DEI issues. And so internally, on the staff side, we've implemented implicit bias trainings for staff and have made available quite a few DEI resources for staff and the opportunity to engage more in this subject area. And additionally, the board approved last year a rule change to double the elimination of bias MCLE credits from one hour to two hours and requiring that one of those two hours be on implicit bias. And currently, the Council on Access and Fairness is working to develop a one-hour implicit bias MCLE that will be made available for free on the state bar's e-learning portal for all attorneys. And we hope that will be made available later this summer. In the area of pipeline to the profession, in supporting law school retention efforts, as some board members may recall, we've presented data, data to the board in the past on law school attrition. However, that data was incomplete because we have in California, American Bar Association, ABA accredited law schools, as well as California accredited and registered schools. And the data that the ABA schools report is a bit more complete than the data from the California accredited and registered schools. So to address that issue in 2019 and 2020, staff worked with the California accredited and registered schools to develop enhanced demographic reporting. And so that began in 2020 where they were reporting additional data, and this is a three-year phased approach to the reporting. So we do hope in the very near future to be able to have a more complete picture of law students in California. Additionally, to ensure bar exam question development and grading analysis are free from bias, there was the Differential Item Functioning, DIF, analysis for essays and performance test questions. And as you know, there was overall no major areas of concern. However, the board did establish the DIF Working Group, which is made up of CBE Committee of Bar Examiner and COAF members to further examine the analysis and issue a report, which we anticipate will be later this year. As Donna mentioned in her report, to improve performance on bar exam, there is the California Bar Exam Strategies and Stories Program, which in its first two applications, the results were very promising, showing that pass rates improved for underrepresented minority bartakers by an estimated 16 percentage points. And the probability of passing for first generation bartakers was higher than for those who did not participate in this intervention. So where, as Donna mentioned, it has been offered for the last few cycles of the bar exam and will be offered again this July. And then finally, for the slide, improving, modifying the moral character determination process. There was an ad hoc moral character working group, committee, working group that finalized three separate documents, the moral character statement, the moral character determination guidelines, and best practices and talking points for law schools. Those three documents were approved by the Committee of Bar Examiners in April 2020 and then by the board in May. In the area of retention and advancement, the diversity summits again are a great opportunity for, for the state bar to understand what, what issues are in this area. And as the board is very familiar with the various efforts to address the racial disparities in the discipline system with the Farkas Study and the Robertson Report. And then promoting judicial diversity, we are continuing to support the judicial council in their efforts to advance judicial diversity. And in 2019, COAF assisted the judicial council in updating their judicial diversity toolkit. So now, looking forward to 2021 and 2022 and activities that we have planned for statewide leadership, we are very excited to be able to publish the second annual report card on the diversity of California's legal profession next month. We are very excited that this will be a report card that is published online in an interactive format so that stakeholders can really go in and do a deep dive into the data that is most relevant to them and most useful to them. We are also planning to include sector-specific calls to action based on the diversity summits that we've held so far. We are also working on a 2020 impact survey, which focuses on the impacts of both the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased national emphasis on racial justice issues on attorneys. As some of you might recall, in 2007, 2008, with the Great Recession, there was a lot, there was a big impact on DEI efforts in, in law firms in particular. And so we wanted to survey California attorneys to better understand how, how the pandemic has, has impacted them. That survey was closed in April, and so we are analyzing the results now and will report the findings shortly. And with diversity summits for 2021, we have a government and public sector summit, which is scheduled for May 27. And we will host additional convenings to share out the report card findings and impact survey findings later this year. We are also hoping to engage with local and affinity bars to support their efforts to have localized events that are similar to our statewide ones. So this is an important and very exciting initiative that we hope to launch this year. The DEI Leadership SEAL Program is a program that we're developing based on the calls to action to encourage legal employers to set and publicly commit to measurable diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. We anticipate that initially, it will be an aspirational program where legal employers will commit to the goals, but we hope that over time legal employers will be able to implement actionable measures to demonstrate their commitment and be held accountable for their progress in this area. In the area of pipeline to the profession, we're continuing to work with the California Accredited and Registered Schools on their enhanced reporting. And then we are also working on a multi-year law school retention study. And so this includes a law school survey that we had opened to the law schools last fall to gather information about the supports that they provide to the, to their students, particularly diverse students. And then we will also analyze the retention data from the American Bar Association and California Accredited, California Accredited and Registered Law Schools with the goal to identify programs that are successful in supporting and retaining diverse students. We anticipate that this report will be available this fall. And as Donna mentioned with the California Bar Exam Strategies and Stories Program, we are very hopeful with the promising results of the first two implementations of, of the program. And so we are hoping to focus this year or in the next two years on seeking permanent funding to institutionalize the program for February and July bar exams moving forward. With retention and advancement in the profession, again, we, we hope to have those diversity summits. And then there is an inactive attorney study that we would like to complete this year. National data suggests that women of color, particularly black women, are highly likely to leave the profession within their first 10 years in the profession. And so we wanted to examine the demographic and professional characteristics of attorneys who moved to inactive status in California specifically. We are also continuing those reform efforts to address disparities in the discipline system, specifically implementing Professor Robertson's recommendations as approved by the board, as well as the work of the Ad hoc Commission on the Discipline System. And this activity is in response to the Justice Gap Study from 2019, which found that law student, which found that student debt load caused a significant number of law students who enter law school with the goal of pursuing a career in the public interest often seek other career options because of their debt load. And so COAF, the Council on Access and Fairness, the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, in partnership with the California Access to Justice Commission, is now studying the viability and impact of loan repayment assistance programs and loan forgiveness on recruitment and, and retention, particularly in the nonprofit and public sector. Really looking at this from a recruitment and retention standpoint, as well as how it impacts diversity in the profession. And so they're in the early stages of developing recommendations currently. And looking at various potential interventions and initiatives moving forward. And then we continue to prioritize supporting the judicial council in its efforts to advance judicial diversity. The judicial council continues to hold numerous presentations, including judicial, including judicial diversity trainings to the State Bar Judicial Nominations Evaluation Committee. And this is my last slide, and it is the funding history and potential funding needs that we've identified. So the primary source of funding for this work is the $2 elimination of bias opt-out fee. And it generates approximately $300,000 a year, which currently supports staff mostly in the Office of Access and Inclusion. It supports the work of COAF as well and our existing initiatives. Staff has also identified these potential funding needs, which we think will be about $425,000 in ongoing funding. in ongoing funding, as well as $100,000 in one time, which, and the, so you can see here that evaluation of law school retention initiatives would be a one-time funding need. And then ongoing, we anticipate, you know, outreach and communication support to share the state bar data and reports, supporting local and affinity bar summits to replicate local events based on the statewide convenings to administrations of the California Strategies and Stories Program. And based on Professor Robertson's recommendations and subject to board approval, we identify that it would cost approximately $200,000 if we were to launch a pilot program for state bar appointed counsel for income qualifying attorneys in Attorney Discipline Matters. So with that, I thank you for your time and your attention, and if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth. Questions, discussion? Melanie?
Yes, I first want to say thank you to Donna and the team. I know that I had raised this at our last board meeting in terms of the 171-page report being a consent agenda, a consent agenda item, so certainly appreciate that being called out. And I know that when we met to talk about diversity and inclusion about a week or so ago, I feel like time just runs together. Elizabeth so graciously talked about it at a high level. I know at that point in time, the presentation had not been completed. But I did have a question, because as I think through the report that I read, and I think through the presentation that you offered, if someone was stepping in and not versed in that 171-page presentation, what would be the two to three things that you would highlight that would have a more direct connection with the, with the biannual report that was given to the state legislature? And maybe that's something you can respond to today, or maybe that's something that needs to be pushed off and for the future, and you could follow up with me directly. But I would really love to understand that, because that was kind of the crux of what I thought we would be receiving today was, was a really great high level of what went to the legislature, so. And if I've missed something, please let me know, because I certainly do miss a lot of things.
So trustees, shall we just a clarification? Are you asking what are the, like, two or three high-level takeaway points that we submit of the, of the report that we took to the legislature?
And maybe not points, maybe two to, two to three underlying themes? Because as I, your, your presentation was great, but as I was looking for a direct connection to what was submitted to the legislature, maybe I missed that. So if you could outline that for me, that would be great. And again, we don't have to take up time in this meeting, but that, that's certainly something that I want to touch on.
Well, Elizabeth, let me, is this, the power, the presentation you just did, is that kind of a summary of the report that was given to the legislature?
Yes, yes, it is. Yes.
So we align with that?
Yeah, it aligns with the report that was submitted to the legislature. The report to the legislature included a summary of the activities in the prior two years in addition to our plans for the 2021 and 2022. So in response, oh, go ahead.
No, please.
Does that answer your question, Melanie, or is it?
Not really, but I would, not, not really, Mr. Chair, but Elizabeth, I think she was going to say something, so I didn't want to cut her off.
Okay.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, perhaps I can, you know, check in with you directly to, to try to better understand what information would be most useful and helpful for you.
Sure. And I, and I think before we check in, I, I would like to say just, I, I was expecting more of a direct correlation of what was submitted to the legislature. And if I missed it, you know, please, please bring that to my attention. But if, if it was a good, strong report or presentation, but it wasn't in alignment with what I had anticipated as it related to what we submitted. So, thank you.
Okay, more discussion, questions? Oh, Arnie, Arnie.
Just, just real quick, I was very interested in the, the student loan debt aspect that you, that I think we're going to do some additional research and, and study on. And just the clarification for me is this, is, are these folks that have actually gone through law school and because of the burden of student debt have then separated themselves from the profession, the law profession? Or these, or, or is the study of folks that may, may wish to go into, into the law, but because of the burden of student loan debt would not, would not do?
So our, the Justice Gap Study looked at law students, so already in law school, and looked at those students who had initially entered law school with, with the goal of either becoming a legal aid attorney or a public defender or district attorney, you know, to become a lawyer in the public interest. But then during the course of law school, because of the debt load and increasing, you know, responsibilities, personal responsibilities veered off of that career path, maybe, maybe into the private sector, because, because they would not be able to, you know, make a living and support their families with the salaries in the public sector and in nonprofit. And so that, that is what the project now is, looking at whether there are interventions or initiatives related to loan repayment assistance programs or loan forgiveness to see if that would help with the retention and advancement of attorneys in the government and nonprofit sectors.
So just one more, just, just so I'm clear, they did finish?
Yes.
They did finish? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that, that phenomenon that Elizabeth was describing is referred to as public interest drift, where they went into law school with the intention of doing, and started to proceed through law school with the intention of doing public service, and drifted away from that due to the debt load and the inability to afford to, to pay back their, their loans and meet their obligations with the salaries that they would be getting in legal services organizations or the public sector. And the, the rate was extraordinarily high of individuals who had, who had indicated that that was their initial interest and were unable to, to carry that out. And we know that the need in the public sector for attorneys is so high. We also know that the, that the, the study told us that the, that students of color had higher debt load. And, and so that's certainly a concern if that has, has students of color veering away from public service because of the higher debt load that they were carrying. There is a, a statutorily authorized program for loan repayment assistance, but it's never been funded. And so what, what the Coalition, the Council on Access and Fairness, the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, and the, the California Access to Justice Commission have been looking at, are, are figuring out ways to develop a program, find funding for a program to be able to really launch a real loan repayment assistance program in California that will encourage people to be able to stay in, stay in public service and not, and not drift from that during law school to a higher-paying private sector attorney job.
And just one more question is, did the study also tell us that this, that there is a disproportionate impact in terms of the students of color or the, that would have gone into that, into the public sector? They are, are students of color or law, law school graduates of color, most disproportionately sort of affected by this?
Yes, because, because students of color graduating from law school tend to have higher debt loads and tend to also have, you know, more, more potential financial responsibilities coming out of law school. And so we, we believe that it does have, have a disproportionate impact on students of color.
Maybe a little bit more specific, and that question wasn't very good, wasn't worded very well. This public sector drift, do we know that there are more law school graduates of color that go into the public sector? And then drift away? Is that, can we, can we make that statement?
So we do now, looking at the diversity report card and the data that we've collected in the past, that, that the, that people of color are better represented in, in the public sector than in the private sector, though they continue to be not well represented in leadership positions in the public sector as they are not well represented in leadership positions in the private sector. So there is a, there, there is a greater percentage of people of color in the, in the, in the nonprofit and public sector than in the private sector. But, you know, I can't, we, we can't sort of, I don't think we have data on, on if, if they were more affected by the, I, I would, I think we expect that they're more, more subject to the public interest drift, and therefore there would be even greater percentages of people of color in the ranks of the public sector lawyers, but that, but that they're also, you know, swayed from that due to the higher debt load.
Thank you very much.
Sonia.
I'm, I'm just really very interested in the loan assistance program, and I have mentioned this to Elizabeth. Before I was appointed by Governor Brown to the state bar, I was appointed to, as a trustee, to the Health Professionals Education Foundation. It is the only foundation created by the state solely to provide scholarships and loan repayments to health professionals who work or promise to work in underserved areas for the scholarships. And for the loan repayment will be for those who are working in underserved areas. And having to go through the applications and looking through the, the candidates, you know, they, you know, they were once in, in these underserved areas, and instead of going to private practices, they would come back to their communities, and it was amazing, really. So I really am very, very interested in, you know, hopefully that we can get this loan repayment program, you know, instituted. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Anyone else? Mark Tony? You're on, you're on mute, Mark.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, so I'm going to give an example. Let's look at page 14 of this report, okay? The title of page 14 is Figure Five: Primary Employment Sector, yada, yada, yada. A lot of categories, okay? And what is the conclusion that you want the reading public, the audience, to get from this chart?
Oh, sorry, trustee Tony, I was just, I was just pulling up the chart so that I could be the exact thing that you are commenting on.
Let me ask, you want me to ask again?
Um, sure.
Okay, it's, what's the takeaway? That, that when, when, you know, someone reads this, let's say, a legislative staffer, okay? I don't think everybody in the world is going to read this, okay? But let's say a legislative staffer will read this. What's the takeaway? What's the, what do you want them to get from this page? What is your goal?
So from this page specifically, we wanted to show by sector, race, ethnicity, gender, and, you know, sexual orientation, people with disabilities, and to point out that the majority of the profession is in the private sector and that the, the two smallest sectors, the government sector and nonprofit sector, are the most diverse. And, and even if in that situation, even though that they're most diverse sectors, that they're still under representation in leadership levels in those sectors.
And, and so if I may, this is also from our, from the data that we gathered for the, the first report card on the diversity in the profession, which was intended to set a baseline for taking a look at the diversity of the profession so we could look at trends over time. And so this was sort of, we took various opportunities to slice and dice the data, looking at the makeup of the, of the profession and how it compared to the makeup of the adult population as a whole, looking at the makeup of the lower ranks in the private sector, nonprofit and government versus leadership, and how, and how that, that, how that looked. We looked at career satisfaction by race, ethnicity and gender, sort of a variety of things to, to identify a baseline and ultimately to help us identify areas where interventions might be successful. So for example, if the data told us that, that, you know, Asian women left the profession or, you know, had highest, had the lowest career satisfaction in certain categories of career satisfaction, that would be, that would be telling. And it would be something for us to explore, whether it's with nonprofit sector, private sector, government sector, wherever that, that level of dissatisfaction is the greatest. Because what we don't want to see is people of color leaving the profession at higher rates than people not of color leaving the profession. We want to make sure that the profession is, creates an inclusive environment so people of color want to join the profession, feel that they have a path to success and career advancement. And so, so here we were laying out the data that we concluded as a result of that first analysis, so we can begin doing trend analysis going forward.
Okay, so I'm going to stick with Figure Five. And I'm going to give an example of the Black African-American bar. So I think at first glance, it says that, it, what it appears to say is that law, 24% of the employees at law firms are African-American, of private law firms. I'm saying, boy, I don't, you know, I, I don't know which, which corporate law firms that is. And, you know, maybe 23% of, so, 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 so like, this is very confusing to read, and I actually, let me, let me finish here. Because I then, after studying this more, realized that what it's trying to say is that of all the African-Americans, of all the black attorneys in the whole field, it happens that 24% of them happen to work at law firms. I think that's what it really is saying. That's more like it, right?
Yes.
But, but when you just look at this, you, if you just look at these numbers in isolation, you say, well, you know, looks like the private law firms are doing okay. They got a court, you know, that, you know, of all the black attorneys, there's 24% of them there. I actually don't count the solar practitioner as an employer, but that's just me. And then, you know, the, the other percentages. But then, if you compare it to the data on page 10, which is where you have the baseline, which is the primary employment sector for, for California attorneys, you see that 38% of all attorneys are employed at the, at, at, at the law firms. Then, then, then you realize that actually, black attorneys are underrepresented in law firms. And what I'm trying to say is that you have to really carefully read this and do the math to reach that conclusion. And I, I just want to suggest in the future that as you present the information, you, you, you make it a little easier for people to figure out where are people adequately, different categories, adequately represented, where are they underrepresented? Because you have to do a lot of work to figure out the meaning of Figure Five. And I don't think most people do the math when they're looking at a set of charts. That, that requires multiple pages. So it's just my comment.
And so I would, I would point you to page, I think page 15, where it is sort of looking by sector and looking at where it is sort of looking by sector and looking at the relative representation of women of color, men of color, white women, white men by sector. There were quite a number of ways that we slice and dice the data in the, in the diversity report card and certainly in this report. I, I did wanna also acknowledge the work of the leadership of the Council on Access and Fairness in helping put together both the diversity report card and, and this report. They gave us quite a lot of their time in, in ensuring that, that they, that they thought that, that the, that it was delivering effective messages. So we will certainly take a look for the, the next report card will be somewhat different. As Elizabeth mentioned, it will be put together in an interactive format, so you can sort of go in and slice and dice the data in your own ways, depending on what are some of the factors that you want to learn from, right? Maybe you want to learn about, about large private firms, so you can see how your firm stacks up. But, so, so that may be a little different, but we'll certainly take those words into consideration and make sure that we think that it is effectively depicting the message, not just in the narrative, but also in the graphics.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so, Mark, cause on the, for the chart on page 14, you mentioned partners in firms. I don't think that's what the statistic here is. It's for, it's employment. So I assume it includes partners, even though they're technically not employees, but so that's, you know, any black or African American person who is working in any capacity at a law firm, that's 24% of that population is working, sorry, not even at a law firm, in the private sector. They could be working for an accounting firm, you know, there are other places where lawyers work, but I'm sure the vast majority is, is law firms, yeah. So, and we know from our other work, that if we, if we had a, if we that, that black and African American attorneys are underrepresented in partnerships of larger law firms. We know that for sure. And I'm, if, I'm sure there's a graphic on this and that report somewhere. I've seen it multiple times.
Well, I, I'll work with my fellow sociologist, Dag, to share, share, share some thoughts that I got on data presentation.
All right, very good. Anyone else? All right, Elizabeth, thank you for the presentation. It was very good. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of work going on in this area. I know putting together this, the report was, was a lot of work and I thank everyone who's both working on the substantive activities that we, that we talked about as well as the reporting.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Uh, next up is item 704, Report on Metrics from Donna and Lisa Chavez. So we need to bring Lisa in. Welcome, Lisa.
I will just introduce the item and let Lisa do all the heavy lifting. So as you'll recall, at the last board meeting, we presented the metrics for all but key pieces of the discipline system. And these were the year-end metrics for 2020 largely, or the, or the fourth quarter of 2020 metrics. As, as we indicated at the time, while we were finalizing all the data for the annual discipline report, we delayed putting out the, those metrics that related to the discipline system. We wanted to ensure that the data was, was entirely consistent. And so this report is just that piece of the metrics report that related to the discipline system that we were unable to present at the March meeting. And with that, I turn it over to Lisa.
Hi, good afternoon. I'll share my screen and we can get started. Just. Okay. Okay, so as Donna mentioned, we pulled, we held back a discipline system metrics from that last metrics report. And we're gonna report on them today. In particular, we're gonna report focus on the State Bar Court Probation and Client Security Fund. Because the OCTC metrics, a lot of them were also in the ADR, for which you received thorough presentation. And it turns out that the Lawyer Assistance Program, we did report on their metrics in the last metrics report. And but overall, across all five of these offices, they have 33 metrics between them. 22 of the metrics have targets. And what we mean by that is that the metric has a goal or a target that it's shooting, shooting for. So however, there's some, some metrics that don't have a target, but yet we report them regularly for simply reporting purposes of true information. So under these 22 metrics that had tar, had targets, five of them missed their targets. And our practice is to understand the reasons why they missed a target and to eliminate how offices are planning to improve and meet that target next time. So let's start with, I'm gonna start with giving some highlights of metrics that did meet their targets. So here's two metrics for the State Bar Court. And in particular, these metrics, these metrics here have to do with the review department. And on the left, this is a metric that says that they have a goal that 90% of the cases will be processed within case type timelines. So, you know, different cases have different timelines. And so what this shows is that for the months that we analyzed all, all of these, they actually exceeded their goal. So 100% of the cases were processed within their timelines. The, on the right, this is actually a metric that's being a little bit more lenient, where it's saying, okay, well, if you can't do it within the case timelines, how about within 150% time of the times? But in that case, 100% of them will be processed within, you know, 1.5, you know, times of the timeline. And so as you can see, they're successful there. The Client Security Fund has two metrics for which they met their targets. On the left, this is a metric where on an annual basis, the office sets a goal for themselves on reducing the amount of time it takes to go from jurisdiction to resolution of a case. And so this year, they set a target that they were gonna reduce the amount of time by 5%. And in 2020, they actually exceeded that goal and reduced it by 13%. So in 2020, the Client Security Fund resolved nearly 1,300 cases. And so they reduced the amount of time by resolving those 1,300 cases by 13%. And on the right, they met their goal of providing status update to all applicants at least twice a year. And so the Client Security Fund actually reached out to over 2,100 applicants and met that target. Here's an example of metrics that don't have targets and they actually both pertain to the probation department. On the left, it's a simple reporting on a quarterly basis, the percent of all probation cases that were completed successfully. And on the right, this is actually measuring the successful completion of restitution by different quarters. And then it's actually even just aggregated further that the success of completion was a complete pay, payment of restitution or, what is that? I'm covering myself, complete or partial payment. So again, this is an example where we don't have targets, because I think that, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why some metrics don't have targets versus others. In some cases, it's appropriate to have a target. Some other cases, it's not. And these were, these are examples where we, where metrics don't have targets. So now I'm gonna turn to a set of metrics that didn't really meet their targets. And when we reached out to their offices, we learned that the reasons why were really related to the pandemic. So let's look at the metric for State Bar Court. This is like OCTC, they have a metric that measures the annual caseload clearance rate and we measure it on a monthly basis. And case, and annual caseload clearance rate is actually different from a traditional caseload clearance rate, whereas an annual caseload clearance rate takes into account the average of the previous 12 months caseload clearance rate. So that's gonna take into account like kind of smoothing out some highs and lows that an office may have. And so if you look at December 2020, that 96% is actually the average of the previous 12 months. And that, of course, was during the months of the pandemic and in particular, when the office was closed. And so in particular, the State Bar Office closure led to abating 150 cases. And so the court expects caseload clearance rates to remain irregular for the next several months while they recover from these case abatements. The Client Security Fund also was impacted by the pandemic. Despite, you know, the previous success in those other measures. Here, they set a goal for, every year, they set a goal for how many cases they're going to resolve. They set a target to resolve 1,350 cases and they just missed their goal. But they only resolved a 1,319. And they attributed to the delays in investigations due to needing to give applicants and respondents more time to provide information, especially during the, when we had shelter in place. And also, even though they, the goal was to hire some temporary staff to help, you know, resolve these cases, there's, they deal with a lot of original documentation that comes mailed into the office and they just weren't comfortable with sending any of that document, documentation offsite during the shelter in place. Okay, so now we can turn to two more metrics and these pertain to the State Bar Court. And sometimes metrics, there's no real reason for meeting them other than say like a procedural issue. And, but again, our offices are really good at describing them. So in this case, the hearing department in the State Bar Court has this similar metric to the review department. That is, 90% of cases will be processed within case type timelines. And as you can see, they met it for every month that we analyzed with exception of November. And that month, the hearing department closed 39 cases, but they were able to go into their files and document, as you can see, they nearly met it, 87%. So they determined that five of them were delayed for these reasons right here. You know, parties requesting good cause, continuacies, multiple judicial resignments and case processing error. Whoops. And then finally, again, you know, they have, we have another metric related to the hearing department case processing process, 100% of the cases within 150% time. And as you can see, barely missed it. And it was really like within each month, it was just one case preventing them from hitting that 100% goal. And on, they looked at their records and determined that all four of the cases, one per month, was due to this reason right here. Parties requesting good cause continuacies due to due process. Okay, so that's, that's our metrics report for this time. And usually we dig into these discipline system metrics that Brad a little bit more deeply, but it's really great to also be, be able to present to the full board. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay.
Appreciate it. So any comments or, actually, if you could turn off screen sharing, that would be great. Thank you. Any comments, discussion, questions? Not seeing any. Okay, so let me just pause for a moment. We've got three items remaining. We've been going for about an hour and a half. Do people feel like they'd like to have a break? Maybe a quick five-minute break? Yeah, I think so. All right, so, uh, let's come back. Let's, it'll be nine minutes. Let's come back at 2:45. All right, see you at 2:45. I've so we're gonna get rolling again. All right. We will take up next item seven oh five regarding proposed state bar rule three point four five three governing regarding client security fund matters. And Gagan Carr is going to present. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. I'm sorry if I got that wrong. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, this is Gagan Carr with OGC, and I'll be presenting this item. Uh, this item requests boards approval for the permanent adoption of the client security fund rule three point four five three. As you may recall, um on March nineteen twenty twenty-one, the board adopted this rule on an emergency interim basis and concurrently authorized a thirty day public comment period for its permanent adoption. Uh, this rule allows hundred and twenty non-disbarred, non-resigned licensees whose actions have resulted in reimbursements to clients by CSF to request a payment plan for any outstanding interest on such reimbursements. These licensees have to meet a criteria that's specified in the rule as well as agree to the terms and conditions that are set forth in this rule. Um, and the reason this rule is being implemented is to afford equitable relief to these licensees because their outstanding CSF reimbursement has accrued significant interest prior to being added to their license fee or to their fee statements. Now during this thirty day public comment period, we received one public comment which did not address the substance of the rule. The commenter stated, and I'm quoting, ten percent interest is too much. If interest is charged, it should be two to three percent per annum. Quotations and there. So this comment is immaterial to this rule because this rule doesn't set the interest for CSF reimbursements. Interest is set yearly by the board pursuant to a different CSF rule, um rule three point four five one. So fact that this one comment doesn't really address substance of the rule. The staff requests and recommends proceeding with the permanent adoption of rule three point four five three. And if there's any questions on this item, I'm happy to address those at this time.
Hey, questions, comments? Not seeing any.
Um, Chair.
Yeah.
Chair, would you like me to screen share the resolution?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, this is Jose Ace's Narrows. I will make the motion and I believe this will bring relief to some of these attorneys that are facing these large bills. Hopefully this will help them get it under control. So move.
Thank you. Thank you, Jose, and thank you for your work on this.
Tony, second?
Mark Tony. Jose moves. Mark Tony seconds. Uh, unless there's any further discussion, I can't see all your videos now, so either use the raise hand function or speak up. Hearing nothing. Sarah, please take the role.
Brought in.
Yes.
Chen.
Yeah.
Cisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Trustee Dela Cruz has left the meeting.
Okay. Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
And trustee Portula has advised me that he um will be absent for the rest of the meeting, so I'll mark him absent for the duration. Shelby.
Aye.
So.
Aye.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is item seven oh six, proposed revised accredited law school rules. The staff who's presenting will be brought into the room momentarily. Hopefully. Sarah is or Dag?
Um, they're, they're in the process of joining. It's Audrey Ching and Natalie Leonard.
All right, welcome Audrey and Natalie. How about it?
Hello. Um, hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Um, we're here back with the revised accredited rules with returning from public comment. With me is Natalie Leonard, our principal program analyst. And I'm the assistant director for the Office of Admissions. We also will have Ken Holloway from the Office of General Counsel. And I'm gonna share my screen for our presentation and um Natalie will take it away.
Terrific. Uh, thank you, Audrey. And in the background, if we could also promote Ken Holloway so he can be available. If there are any questions, that would be terrific. So as Audrey said, today we're requesting adoption of the proposed revised rules for accrediting California law schools. This proposed rule set would completely replace the current rules for accredited law schools. Next slide, please. Uh, we've talked about this proposal with the board before the board authorized public comment, but we'll just quickly summarize the path that was taken in order to get to this point. What the purpose was, how it was developed with significant public participation over the last two years. Uh, the four key purposes for accreditation that are embodied in the current rules. And um now that the rule set has come back from public comment, a discussion of the public comment received. Several technical staff amendments for clarity that we recommend for adoption. And as does the committee of bar examiners and a proposed implementation plan for this large package of rules. Next slide. Thank you. So this initiative was undertaken at the request of the board and it was designed to ensure that the rules support modern purposes for accreditation, that they incorporate best practices in accreditation, and they also create a framework to recognize law schools that are accredited by regional or national institutional accreditors. Next slide, please. In terms of the way that the proposal was created, because it was a full replacement of the rules, staff and the committee of bar examiners sought a significant amount of public participation. And uh we can go into the next slide and talk about some of the groups that were participating. Over the course of two years, the committee on state bar accredited and registered schools met eleven times in public meetings. Uh, the presentations and work of those committees were further discussed at the committee of bar examiners with additional discussion. And I'd also like to particularly thank the council on access and fairness as well as the Office of Access and Inclusion, who helped with the inclusion of a new section of the rules on diversity, equity and inclusion, which has always been a goal of these particular sectors of schools, but has never been codified before as a part of the rules. So we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. In order to create the rules, they took a very holistic point of view, starting back at the beginning, thinking about the state bar mission and why the state bar participates in law school accreditation. They reviewed the best practices of professional accreditors, national accreditors and professional accreditors in a wide range of areas. Medical, nursing, many other areas, engineering, to figure out what was going on today in accreditation, what was working out well, and what should the state bar be thinking about for the future. Uh, we also reviewed the committee request from the committee of bar examiners that had been made over the years regarding the rules going back um over three years. Ultimately identifying four key purposes for law school accreditation and making sure that these new rules focused on those purposes and um let go of any rules that did not foster these purposes. Okay, next slide, please. If we go on to the next slide.
Yes, trying. Sorry, I don't know what happened. One second.
Okay, thank you. While Audrey's doing that, we can talk about what the next slide would share. It would talk about the four key purposes. And uh they are, oh, here we go. All right. We can go one more. Consumer protection and transparency, student success, of course, diversity, equity, inclusion and inclusion, and preparation for licensure and professionalism. By professionalism, we mean preparation for practice and also ethical practice. Uh, next slide. A jointly accredited option will be available for schools that um are part of an institution that's accredited by a national accreditor or regional accreditor such as the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. Those accreditors uh focus on the institution as a whole and make sure healthiest systems are in place to ensure student success. And uh we'd like to be able to recognize that in a way the state bar has not been able to do previously. The school, the uh schools that are part of this program would still be responsible to the state bar. They would submit an annual report and they would still need to uh to comply with core principles such as the minimum cumulative bar pass rate. And on the next slide, we'll see a little bit more about what those core rules are. I won't go through all of them because they're a somewhat lengthy list, but these are the key programmatic elements that might not otherwise be addressed by the institutional accreditor so that this way, when a school is jointly accredited, the oversight will still be fully complete. Okay, next slide. Uh, today we're here to talk about public comment received and also several technical amendments that were proposed by staff and to request adoption of the rules as presented today in your item. Next slide, please. Uh, with a pub, a series of public comment periods over the last two years, it's not surprising that only five comments were received. Uh, two were received from deans of unaccredited law schools, though these are actually accredited rules. They had to do with, the first comment had to do with questions that will actually be addressed in the guidelines in terms of the specific materials uh that must be included when a school is jointly accredited. Um, and in addition, it had some helpful suggestions for schools that are in jeopardy of losing their accreditation that are also under consideration for guidelines. One JD graduate also submitted a comment regarding the complaint process that is embedded in the rules. This complaint process mirrors the ABA process as well. Um, and we think that the process that is in place right now is appropriate. And that particular individual received quite a bit of um follow-up of regarding the questions that they raised. Uh, one anonymous student wanted a specific timeline for the return of grades. Uh, but because each school is different in terms of their semester, uh it was not realistic to put a specific timeline, uh but rest assured that one of the elements of the rules is to require a prompt, thorough, efficient and helpful feedback from faculty at a time that's helpful for students. Um, and then we also received comments from a licensee about the Office of Admissions and about testing in general that were outside the substance of these rules. Uh, overall, four supported other than that final licensee. And uh we shared this with CS bars in addition to the committee of bar examiners. And uh no changes are recommended based on the public comment uh from either CBE or CS bars. Next slide. Staff did propose several technical amendments that are redlined in the document for your review. Uh, since the item went out for public comment, they were actually not suggested in response to the public comment, but rather they were technical amendments designed to improve clarity. And um we have brought along a Ken Holloway from our Office of General Counsel to talk about why we believe that these do not need to go out for public comment, uh since they are simply technical and non-substantive. Go forward to the next slide and thank you again.
Thanks, Natalie. I'm Ken Holloway from the Office of General Counsel. Uh, Natalie invited me just to highlight uh what one fact that's in the, in the agenda item, that under state bar rule one point one zero. If an item has been out for one, one round of public comment, it need not go for additional public comment for changes. Uh, if the board deems those changes to be non-substantive or reasonably implicit in the proposal. Uh, for these technical amendments, staff sought counsel review. Uh, and Office of General Counsel and and staff took a look and are in agreement that all the technical amendments are either non-substantive or reasonably implicit in the proposal. Uh, they're all being offered for clarification. Uh, and then we just wanted to point that out that the uh, the board can uh can move forward without another round of public comment in that case.
Thank you, Ken.
I want to point out that my staff is not in a tropical climate. Uh, that is a virtual background.
Don't spoil the illusion.
Too bad. All right.
Perhaps he just felt such enjoyment reviewing the five comments that were requested by the Office of Admissions, and we thank the Office of General Counsel for their efforts. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we can go one more and justice count. Uh, in terms of record, if you should decide to go forward to adopt these, we wanted to talk about a potential timeline. I hear because it is a full, full rules package. Next slide, please. It's recommended that these would be implemented on January first. A reason being, uh, we would let be able to get one more full set of annual reporting under the current rules. And schools would have a sufficient amount of time to prepare. Uh, currently, in particular, the fixed facility schools are operating under a waiver to take the health steps that they need to through January first as a result of the COVID pandemic. And it's hoped that things will be back more to a typical order by January one twenty twenty-two. Uh, in terms of the phase in period, it may take time for some of the requirements to be fully met and is proposed that there would be a two-year phase in period through twenty twenty-four. And for those schools that are in the process of seeking accreditation, uh, and we expect there may be two such schools this year, uh that they would be required to seek full compliance with the new rules, uh if they did not achieve compliance prior to January first. And um next slide, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take questions.
Okay. Uh, let's turn off the screen sharing, please, and then comments, questions from board members. Brandon.
And ill timed or rightly timed uh ringtone. I think we'd all want to be at a beach right now, too. So um Natalie, thank you to you and your team for all, all of your work on this. Um, I had some questions that that came to mind and looking at your presentation. One, uh, minimum cumulative bar passage rate. One, minimum cumulative bar passage rate. What is, what is that and what is the rate?
I'm sorry, I had a little technical difficulty. I heard. You to ask about the minimum cumulative pass rate and something else, if you wouldn't mind repeating.
Yeah, just when you say minimum cumulative bar passage rate, what does that mean? And then also, what would that rate be set at?
Thank you. Okay, so that's actually a continuation of a current rate. And that right now is set at, it's a, it's a 40% cumulative pass rate over five years. It was first implemented, it was discussed in 2015. It was implemented shortly thereafter during that year. And schools have been reporting that for a number of years. So at this point, it's suggested not to change. And that pass rate is something that we encourage prospective students and the public to look to posted on the admissions website. It is at 40%. By comparison, the ABA standard would be a 75% over two years for each individual class. The state bar pass rate is more flexible to allow for the wider range of circumstances. And the wider range of score profiles that can be accepted by these schools.
And then the library requirements. You know, we live in technological age. The, you know, majority of practitioners don't even possess, you know, that large of a written law library. What would qualify as a electronic. Library to meet that requirement.
Sure. So for most of the schools, they're offering their materials through Alexis or Westlaw. A few are using, one in particular using Cali and Fastcase for general materials. And then they can also have additional electronic subscriptions. They are also required to have a free copy of their textbooks available. Free access.
Then one more question regarding costs. So with the site visits, that would be required under this rule and then also. Oh, did I freeze?
For a moment, I hear there's a question about site visits.
Yes, sorry about that. Yeah, so what, have you conducted a study on how much site visits would cost when going to conduct these checks?
We do site visits right now. We do them for both the accredited and the unaccredited schools. And in fact, during this year, as a result of the pandemic, we've been doing them online. The schools are billed on an hourly rate depending on how long the inspections take. And we are actually in the process of working on a more standardized template to make sure that the cost and the time invested. Is as efficient as possible, balancing the need to get a very good result from the inspection.
I think that's been the main concern that I've heard and especially for schools who are trying to. Reduce costs as much as possible so they can reach out to economically disadvantaged communities. You know, it's, I think it's a very real concern that these costs could mount. And, you know, would make it prohibitive, a cost prohibitive to maintain. You know, their doors being open. So. When do you expect this? You know, further study or reports on. Making sure that those standardized costs are, are maintained.
There's not a specific study in place. It's an ongoing thing that we've been doing. And we are beginning to see somewhat of a reduction in the cost billed for the accredited inspections. And we're in the process right now of creating a new set of templates as well as a free online preparation webinar. Also for the unaccredited law schools and to help them prepare most efficiently for their inspections. And that's something that we would certainly be happy to bring back to the board for further discussion. And I also do agree that since the committee allowed the libraries to go electronic in 2019. The accredited law schools have been very pleased, students have been very pleased. And there's been a cost reduction as a result of that to the schools.
Great, thank you.
All right. More discussion, questions? If not, I assume we have a proposed resolution. You put that up on the screen.
Thank you, Sarah. There it is.
All right. Is anyone in a motion making mood?
Sean, this is Brandon. I would make a motion, but I would also want to amend the motion to add. Something that, that comports with what Natalie and I just talked about, which as far as bringing back the site visit issue before the board. And, you know, making sure that there's, there's that standardized streamline process.
Brandon, can you give me language? I'm sorry, I was a little bit distracted during that time.
Further resolved that. The office. This is the Office of Admissions, correct? Okay, Office of Admissions report back to the board. On steps taken. To standardize. Site cost visits. And to keep. The board informed of any. Substantial costs. Or unexpected. I guess developments. This is why sausage shouldn't be made on the fly, so my apologies.
Okay, and as a practical matter, just keep in mind too that when an inspection is very clean and everything is in order. It generally can be conducted more efficiently than when a school needs additional support. So you may see a difference from school to school where that additional support is needed.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Sonia, second.
All right, motion by Brandon, second by Sonia. Discussion. I can't see all your videos, so use the raise hand or speak up.
So Sean, if I, Sean, if I could, this, you know, dates back as Natalie was talking about several years. And it's something that I really strongly believe in. I'm a graduate of an unaccredited law school. Something that I, I made a conscious choice to pursue. Because I didn't want to come out with large amounts of law school debt and wanted to be able to work in an area that didn't constrain me to. You know, a place that paid the most money. And so. Oh, I was, I was reminded of this when trustee Sewell was talking about. You know, student debt load and how that impacts people's career arcs and choices and really being able to work with people that they feel called to, to work with. And so I'm very pleased that the state bar is continuing to accredit law schools. We're one of the few jurisdictions that do. This is something where I think that the rest of the US, the rest of the states, the United States. Are starting to look at and to, to take note of. What the work that the state bar is doing to increase diversity in the profession. In many areas, including that of access to a legal education. And so I really think that the state bar is at the forefront of this. And I'm glad that we're continuing to hold this banner. Want to thank all of the staff of State Bar and then everybody who collaborated. On this project, because I know it was a massive undertaking. It was one that. There are a lot of, a lot of emotions on both sides, a lot of passion and fire. And I really think that. You know, this was a good meeting of the minds and. A good chance for Californians to continue to. Have access to. To being a lawyer. And I'm kind of reminded of, I think it's 21 Jump Street. Where one of the characters is asked to recite the Miranda rights. And one of them, Miranda rights is incorrectly cited as, you have the right to be a lawyer. And like, oh wait, that's not a, that's not a right, but. Here in California. Access to a legal education and one that's affordable is something that I think should be at the forefront of, of our work. And it's going to be allowed to do so, I believe, through, through these rules. So thank you to staff for your work.
Greatly appreciate your support.
All right, anyone else? Okay, Sarah, would you take the role, please?
Rotten.
Yes.
Chen. I do not see her, so I will note that.
I apologize. She stepped out. She'll be back. She'll be back as soon as she can.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Sis Narrows. Dela Cruz, still absent. Okay, Dellen.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Shelby.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Sarah. And can you go ahead and turn off the screen sharing? And we are nearing the finish line. We're going to move on to our last item for today. Which is item 707, closing the, adding. Members to the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group. Donna and Randy Deefen Torrem are going to, are slated to present on this.
And Randy is now in.
Sure. Welcome, Randy.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Randy, do you want to take it away or do you want me to? Lead on?
I'm happy, I'm happy to take it away.
Go for it.
The Closing the Justice Gap Working Group has been meeting since January. They've actually had three. Full plenary session meetings, January 14th, February 19th, April 9th. They've formed two subcommittees. To initiate all the work in the board's charter. The two subcommittees are a scope subcommittee. To explore the dimensions of the sandbox, what ought to be considered in the sandbox, what's considered outside the sandbox. What's the articulated purpose and mission of the sandbox? And another subcommittee known as the Sage Subcommittee. Which stands for Structure and Governance, Education, and Enforcement. And that subcommittee has begun looking at what this temporary pilot program regulatory structure. Should be formed as and what should be some of the. Data collection and other steps taken for implementing essentially risk-based. Regulation for the sandbox participants. And the subcommittees have had about four meetings to date. And the next meeting of the full working group is June 18th. And what's been learned in the leadership meetings since the start of this important project. Is that we could probably use a little bit more in terms of input. From those who are on the front line, so to speak, of delivery of legal services. To people who are underserved. And this particular agenda item is simply asking that the working group. Be allowed to expand its membership by up to five members. And to target additional members who would fit that goal. And so representatives from a community-based organization, domestic violence shelter, or social services organization. Or similar professional provides guidance in legal matters or social services to persons. Whose issues involve legal problems. Also, a representative from a court-based self-help center. And then trial judges, including retired judicial officers with experience in non-criminal proceedings. Who see what happens when you have unrepresented or pro se litigants come before them. We would ask also, the agenda items mentions and the resolution provides. That the chair of the working group be authorized, delegated the authority to make these up to five appointments. In consultation with the board liaisons. And just to give a little sort of recent history perspective. The board back in November of 2020 received a similar request from the California Power Professional Working Group. And was a situation where they also needed some additional troops to carry out the work. And the board agreed to expand that group and to delegate to the chair the ability to make those appointments. And that is essentially what the chair and the leadership of the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group is asking of you today. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Not seeing anyone, all right. Sarah, can you put up the proposed resolution, please?
This is Jose. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Shelby, I'll second.
All right, motion by Jose, second by Melanie. Any further discussion? Remember, I can't see your video for most of you.
Sean, this is, Sean, this is Brandon. So I did talk with. I think it was Donna and Sarah about this. And the addition of the board appointment liaisons being a part of this process. And, you know, with the, with the. State bar having a different diversity objectives, I thought it was really important for. Our trustee, trustee liaisons to be able to speak to this issue. And just to provide some oversight on that. And so I don't anticipate. You know, there's going to be issues in that area, but just wanted to make sure that. That our objectives as a board could continue even with the appointment of members on this working group. So I support this and thanks staff for their work on it.
Very good. Thanks, Brandon. Anyone else? All right, Sarah, take the role, please. Sarah, we can take the role. Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Yes.
Chen. Okay, Sis Narrows. Dela Cruz. Dellen.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Shelby, no, yeah, Shelby.
Hi.
Sewell.
I'm an I.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Epstein.
Epstein. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The motion carries.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, so we've reached the end of our meeting for today. We're not going to adjourn. Going to recess the meeting and continue tomorrow in open session beginning at nine. Solely to hear any public comment on the one closed session item that we will take up tomorrow, which is 7,002 Chief Trail Counsel finalist interviews. So again, we'll begin and open at nine and then we will, once we hear any public comment, we'll go into closed session. All right, thanks, everyone, and I'll see you tomorrow.